Good evening. Welcome to the Heights High Student Led Board of Education Candidate Forum. This forum was organized by the Heights High Parent Teacher Student Organization and the CHUHPTA Council. Students applied to be panelists and the Heights student body generated the questions that will be asked tonight. My name is Gabe Crenshaw. I will be your moderator. I am the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Chair of the PTSA. Other members of the PTSA are here tonight. Jen Holland, Heights High PTSA President, and Melissa Wood, Parent Advocacy Chair, who will serve as our timekeeper. We would like to thank Dr. Alyssa Lawson McKinnney, Principal of Heights High School, and all of the student panelists for their time and interest in participating, as well as every student who submitted a question for this forum. This is truly a student-led forum. It is only happening because the students of Heights High are politically aware and are strongly committed to the well-being of their school and the future of education in this district. We would also like to thank the candidates for taking the time to come and respond directly to student concerns. Tonight, we have present Dan Heitz, Malia Lewis, Jody Serini, Mordecai Renner, Charles Drake, and Mario Clapton Zimler. Maureen Molyne cannot be present due to a scheduling conflict. The procedure this evening will be as follows. Each panelist will ask at least two questions, and each candidate will be asked at least two questions and will have two to three minutes to answer. The candidates will be asked different questions. We kindly ask that the candidates do not volunteer responses to questions that were not specifically directed to them. The last question of the evening will be asked to all candidates and will serve as a closing statement. Candidates will have three minutes to answer. The panelists will introduce themselves before asking their first question, and the candidates will state their name before answering their first question. Let us begin.
Hi, my name is Claire Dolan and I'm a junior at Heights. This question is for Dan Heitz. What is the current board doing right and wrong to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and its variants?
Claire, could you repeat the first part of the question? I just didn't hear your words.
Yes. What is the current board doing right and wrong to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and its variants?
Great question. First of all, thank you very much to the PTSA and to the administration of the building for making it available to us. Boy, COVID is really the big issue at the moment. I'm a teacher myself, and so I always sort of have two districts to look at, not really compare, but learn from. In terms of what the district is doing best right now, we're doing our best. And that starts with the students and the teachers in the building. It's not easy. It's not easy to wear one of these for seven and a half hours a day. But we're doing it because we know that it works. We are, our numbers, you know, every case of COVID is a tragedy, but our numbers are pretty good when you compare our schools to some of the neighboring districts, certainly to the district where I teach, because we have a different commitment to the mask mandate. So I think that that's probably the thing that we're doing best. Where I think that we could probably improve is to, I would like to see us have more outdoor spaces available. We don't have an outdoor learning space available here at Heights High, for instance. I have this dream for the green space in between the baseball field and the softball field to be covered with a permanent shelter of some sort that would make a fantastic outdoor learning space so you could take a class outside. I think that that would be great even beyond COVID. I think that giving kids more opportunities to go outside and take masks off, especially while the weather is good, would improve morale and just putting up with these things. But as, you know, I'll sort of circle back and finish where I began, which is, you know, we're doing our best, and that really starts with the kids and certainly the staff. It's not easy to enforce the mask mandate, constantly asking kids to move their masks above their nose, but it's just what we do, and, you know, we're all human. So thank you for the question.
If you could just speak up a little bit when asking your question.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Reed. I'm a senior at Cleveland Heights High School. My question is for candidate Renner. How do you think the Board of Education generally and you specifically can make our community a better place?
I appreciate the question. Can you just repeat the last bit of it? I apologize.
How do you think the Board of Education generally and you specifically can make our community a better place?
A good place?
A better place.
Better place. So, thank you for the question, if you may. And I appreciate your courage for coming and asking a question in a public sphere. I'd like to thank as well the PTSA and everyone else who made this opportunity happen. The Board of Education's job is to ensure that the residents of the community that contribute to the well-being by financial contributions, such as their tax payments, are used in a positive way to ensure that you, as students, have everything you need to become productive members of society. When you're in high school, this is your chance to grow. This is your chance to learn as much as you can and take what you learn, take all your experiences and then bring it to the world and show them what you can do to better the world. And what I, as a board member, would do is to ensure that you, along with all of your student friends, and not to exclude anyone, including those who have a harder time to learn, have the opportunity to receive all services that are available to, including the Special Education Department, including busing, including the Athletics Department, et cetera, to ensure that you guys all have everything that you need to grow and learn so that you can then bring better things to the community at large as you grow older. And that's really what the commitment of anybody that's party to a Board of Education. It's not just for now. It's the future of every society are the children. When I was younger, I was the future. I hope I've done a good job. And now you're the future. And so my job as a board member would be to give you the best chance that you have at a good future so that you can make the world a better place, and that would be the satisfaction of doing my duties.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Bisher and I'm a sophomore at Heights. This is a question for candidate Clapton Zimler. Because of the ongoing pandemic, our teachers, like many others around the country, are dealing with a lot this year. How do you plan to support them from your position on the board?
I'm sorry, I heard the teachers are something. How do I plan to support them?
Yeah. Our teachers are dealing with a lot this year. How do you plan to support them from your position on the board?
Thank you so much for that question. I myself have been a teacher for 11 years. I'm serving as a principal intern at Shaker Heights City Schools this year. And one of the first things that a leader can do to support people who they are leading is to show empathy. I have been in the shoes of your teachers the past two years, figuring out how to provide quality education, the passion of my life to the students that I love, successfully some days on those concurrent learning days and failing on others. We had to really recreate what education looked like to give you just a fraction of what you deserve. And so, understanding where your teachers have been, with myself being in the classroom, and then also now that I have this sort of 30,000-foot view as a building administrator, I intend on making sure that there is a cooperative relationship between the teachers and this Board of Education. I am very much so interested in rebuilding trusts that have been lost in the various issues and conflicts that have happened within our school district. You know, families fight, but at the end of the day, we are still a community and we have to come together to figure out the issues of our day so that your education is the valued quality education that we know it could be. I think also one of the things we need to do as a board is to uplift the concerns of teachers about class size. We need to make sure that our teachers have access to the same, to the socio-emotional support that is needed for a society that has been traumatized by a pandemic. While we are working to serve you, also, our teachers are struggling with not only their own professional issues and worries as we're getting back into school in person full-time, but the world is still spinning around our teachers. They are dealing with deaths in the family due to COVID. They're dealing with their children having lost years of education just with the concurrent learning and the remote learning. And so, being conscious of those realities for our teachers will be essential. And then making sure that they have the support staff, also paraprofessionals, the people who work alongside our instructional faculty, and making sure that they have the instructional and professional qualifications and training that they need to really inform instruction. And so, our teachers will have, not just one with my colleague Dan, but two people who have lived in their shoes on the Board of Education should I get elected.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucia and I'm a junior at Heights High. My question is for candidate Lewis. Last year, our teachers went on strike. If you are reelected, how do you plan on ensuring the board wins back teacher trust?
Thank you, Lucia, for that question. I have to take issue with the first part, however, which is that the teachers were not on strike. They threatened to strike, but there wasn't actually a strike. And I don't think this is the right place to rehash a very difficult time in our district's history during that contract negotiation. But more important is the second part of that question, which is, what do we do to improve relations and make things better the next time round? So, the contract between the school district and Local 795 is only a one-year contract, which means that we know we have to go back into negotiations basically in March in order to have a new contract ready for when the current contract expires. That process has been contentious the last two times, which are the two negotiations I was present for. I have no idea how things went before I was on the board because it's something that nobody thinks about until all of a sudden they're in the middle of it. But what I can tell you is that the last two contract negotiations were unnecessarily difficult and that there are other ways of conducting a negotiation, a labor negotiation, that don't have to be as contentious, as divisive, and as... There's a word that just lost, I just, sorry, flew out of my brain. Argumentative, but that's not the word I was looking for. And so, I would like to see us go into the next round with a different frame of mind, use a different negotiating model. And in order for everybody to agree to whatever that model is, we need to spend a little bit of time working together to explore what our options are. Now, I'm not an expert on labor negotiations, but I know that there are other ways of going about it. And so, I want to make sure that we work with the mediators, federal mediators, from the beginning so that we know that we can go in with a different model that is not as contentious and doesn't create that atmosphere of us against them. Because really, in order for a school district to work, everybody has to be working together. And that's administrators, teachers, all the non-teaching staff, and the students, right? It's a multi-layered, multipronged object. We all have to be working together, otherwise nothing, everything falls apart. Is that yellow?
Yes, it is.
So, I am committed to going at it a different way, and we all have to get together and we all have to take advantage of our resources, right? You've heard that from your teachers. Use your resources. Lawyers have a bad reputation because they're overused in our society, but there is great value in having representation at the table so that everybody knows that they're going about it the best way possible. And so, that's one thing I would definitely want to ensure is that both sides of the table have legal representation and that we start off with a mediator present from the beginning and that we use a different model of negotiating. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Davia Briggs and I am a junior here at Cleveland Heights High School. My question is for candidate Serini. Why isn't the salad bar one of the healthiest options available to students included in the free lunch?
Thank you, Davia. I appreciate the question, and I believe the question was, why is the salad bar one of the healthiest options, but it's not included in the free lunch? Okay. So first of all, I would like to thank the PTSA and the PTA Council for having us here. I'd like to thank the staff here at Heights High. I'd like to thank Ms. Crenshaw for being our moderator tonight. And of course, I'd like to thank all of our students who are here asking questions, as well as those who participated. And Davia, that's a really good question. And I don't know the answer for sure, but I believe it has to do with the fact that it is measured by weight. I believe that. And I know at one point, when Dr. Dixon was here, the question was raised, and I believe for a while, the salad bar was free. So I'm not sure why it reverted back, but it sounds like, from what you're telling me, that it has reverted back to it's not free anymore. And that's one of those things where, you know, if you hadn't raised this in a specific forum, I would never know that that's going on because obviously, you know, the board, we are, you know, we only have two employees technically. We have the superintendent and the treasurer. And then we also set policy and make high-level decisions. We're usually not involved with something, you know, that's at the level of the salad bar. But now that you brought it up, I will make sure I raise that with Superintendent Kirby and find out. And I agree, I think that, you know, it's one of the healthiest options. We definitely want our children to be eating healthier and making the best choices for their long-term growth. And if there's anything I can do to make sure that the salad bar is an option for you, I would like to make sure that that happens because obviously, we want our kids in the best shape they can be. And if a kid would rather have a salad than a pizza, I'm all for making sure they get that salad. So, thank you for raising that issue. I'm going to make a note of it, and I will make sure I get in touch with Superintendent Kirby tomorrow and find out what we can do about that for you. So thank you for raising it and bringing it to my attention.
I've got a question for candidate Drake. One of the themes of your campaign has been lowering property taxes in the Heights. If you are elected and taxes are lowered, what part of the school's budget will be cut?
Thank you very much for that question. Our policy is, our position is that we want to make sure that the dollars are spent reasonably and efficiently. There has been a lot of mismanagement of money at this district's levels. I can give you a couple of examples if you would like. Number one, this board was cited by the Auditor of State for illegally spending $34,000-plus of taxpayer money to fund a survey of the levy that was passed last November but failed in March. That, they were told that they had to repay that money, and it was a finding against Treasurer Gaynor, one of the board employees, the superintendent, and the vendor. This board decided that, hmm, what can we do? We submitted an insurance claim against their insurance policy, and they had an insurance company pay that claim. That's number one. Number two, this board, no member of this board sits on the negotiating committee for their labor negotiations. There is no one in the committee, on that negotiation committee, representing the taxpayers. The people who are negotiating are the treasurer, the assistant superintendent in charge of human resources, and a lawyer, and whatever team the teachers' unions and whatever union they're negotiating with. No board member is on the negotiating committee. You can go to the district's website and pull the contract, and that's the truth. I would like to see this board reduce some of their administrative costs and spend that money on providing you, the student, with more options of classes, outside activities, increase the arts, the music department, et cetera. I want the money to be spent for the students and not for the administration. Thank you for that question.
I have a question for candidate Renner. What would you say to voters who are concerned that if elected, you would divert public school funds to private schools?
Thank you so much for that question. I don't believe that it would be legal to do that. That would be number one, and I follow the law. Number two is, I'm running for Board of Education of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District, and the intention would be to take the tax income and spend it directly where it belongs, in the public school system. The only thing I want to see changed with regard to that is how it is spent, and that's what we have in common, which is why the three of us, Ms. Lynn, Mr. Drake, and myself, are actually running together. We have a like-minded idea to spend the money properly. I'll revert back to your question before of the salad bar. There's no reason you shouldn't have a salad bar. I have two teenage girls that are in 11th grade, and both of them like salad. I have no idea why you're not offered salad. It should be offered to you. There's no reason that any student in this school, district, anywhere, should be lacking anything whatsoever. And my intention would be is to take all those funds and make sure those students that are in the public school system are provided with every necessary component to make sure that they have every chance to be good, productive members of society. I'm also going to use a couple of seconds real quickly to respond to an additional question that was asked that I wasn't asked, but...
No, we're, sorry. We're not doing, we're not doing responses. You're only...
No, 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 there's no response. It's, she was asked the question, and I'm actually taking part of the question and answering her question as well.
Was it directed towards you?
Well, they're asking a question about what I would do or whether I would not, whether I would support the public school system, and I would like to respond to that as well.
Okay.
So, all the questions, if I may. Thank you. So, the student second from the left, you asked a question about the negotiations with the teachers, and there was a teacher strike, and how that, how I, as a board member, would efficiently spend the monies and support the public school system.
Sorry, that's not the question that was directed towards you.
Okay, so you don't want me to answer the question?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
This question is for candidate Serini. Not long after the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the board tried to cut teacher healthcare. Would this happen again if we have another pandemic or if the current one worsens? What specific changes would you make to teacher health pay, or teacher pay and health benefits?
Thank you for that question, Claire. First of all, I would like to clarify that it wasn't, it wasn't due to COVID. It was due to the negotiations. And I want to make sure that people understand that we were in a really hard position. Our district was facing a crisis. We had not passed that first levy. The state had, to make the state budget balance, they had reduced our foundation payments, which is the money that we get from the state. And so, we were in a situation where we either had to resort to mass layoffs, which would have increased your class sizes, and that would not have been a good working relationship or working situation environment for the staff. It wouldn't have been a good learning experience for you. Our other option would have been to cut extracurriculars, to cut sports, to cut the arts, and to reduce transportation, which we did not think would provide a good educational opportunity for the children. And we frankly didn't think that that would be a good situation for our staff either. A lot of our staff get extra payments for being advisors for extracurriculars, so it would have reduced their income. And so, our last option was, we looked at our healthcare plans, and they were extremely generous compared to other districts around us. And so, we really felt that the best thing we could do was preserve jobs, which was not resort to layoffs, and also to make sure that you students had what you needed as far as sports and arts and, you know, all the activities that you enjoy. And while it was a really, really difficult decision, and none of us wanted to do it, in the end, we felt that, you know, in a, in a situation where there were no good choices, that that was the least bad choice. And it was painful, and it wasn't anything that any of us really wanted to do. Now, what I will say is that we do feel that we needed to have our plans in line, and I think they're much closer in line than where they were before. And I'm absolutely committed to rebuilding relationships with the teachers. I go to the buildings as much as I can, and I volunteer in the buildings, and I work with students. And I hope we can have our staff recognition banquet again this year because that's a lot of fun and it's a way to celebrate what our teachers do every single day for you kids. And I just want to see us get back on a track where we're past COVID and we can get back on the exciting path that we were on before COVID happened. I mean, we were doing great things as far as closing the achievement gap. Our graduation rate was up. We were seeing our enrollment up. And it breaks my heart to see that because of COVID, how many things became far more difficult and more challenging, and we need to get past it and get back on that great track. So, thank you.
This question, this question is for candidate Lewis. Under the current dress code, male students can wear tank tops to the school while female students cannot. There are other examples of the differences, but their underlying question is why male students and female students have different dress codes?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat that much more slowly. I didn't understand most of the question, I'm sorry.
Under the current dress code, male students can wear tank tops to school while female students cannot. There are other examples of the differences, but underlying question is why do male students and female students have different dress codes?
Okay. The dress code is inherently sexist. There is no sugarcoating that. If you read the dress code, it also memorializes, let me do this better, sorry. The dress code memorializes things from the past, fashions which change, issues which happened in the high school in particular decades ago. And so, if you look at it, there's very clear examples of things that are no longer relevant, like, you're not allowed to wear belts with metal studs on them. No longer a big fashion trend, but in the late '70s, early '80s, it was a big deal. The other example that I remember from reading it is, there's a ban on wearing Heelys or other wheeled shoes. Now, that's also a fashion that, no longer relevant, right? So, it's, the dress code in some ways is very similar to the whole legal system. Something goes wrong, we don't know how to fix it, so then we make a fix and we create a written patch that then becomes memorialized forever, saying, "You can't do this because somebody once did it." The reality is that the dress code is irrelevant and should go away. Now, it's on my list of things to do. If I were queen of the universe, I could wave a magic wand, but I am one of five board members, and we've been a bit busy recently. So, the dress code is still on my list of things to address when the time is right. I know people say, well, you know, the time will never be right, but COVID has taken precedence for obvious reasons. for obvious reasons. Student achievement has taken precedence for obvious reasons. But, in the grand scheme of things, the dress code is meaningless and should go away, but it's going to be a process to make that happen.
I've got a question for candidate Heinz. One of the things that makes Cleveland Heights so great is its diversity. If elected, what would you do personally to increase diversity on the school board?
Great question. I think that we have a really deep well of incredibly qualified folks who are, are willing to serve. And when I talk about that, I'm talking about, one of the initiatives of this board has been to expand the use of task forces and committees. So, we have task forces and committees around things like facilities, and finances, and equity, and early childhood education, and, and it goes on and on. There's about a dozen of them. And in the past three or four years, we have expanded that group of committees and task forces a great deal, and as a result, we have brought in a number of community members who have gotten to know more about the operations of the district, and we've learned more about, about them and their background, and I think that this is a pool of people who I hope will kind of take the next step and engage more deeply in the district. They've shown that they have an interest and a passion for the schools and the community. They're learning about the work that's being done by the district and how that work is being done. And my sincere hope is that from that larger group, which is a very, a very diverse group, that we will find more candidates who are willing to make the commitment to the school district and, and run. There are also some trainings that are offered throughout the state for candidacy on Board of Education. The, the Ohio School Boards Association does trainings, as well as the Ohio Education Association and the Ohio Federation of Teachers. So, there's quite a few opportunities for those who are interested to take that next step, and I sincerely hope they do. I also want to talk, though, about diversifying our teaching staff. You know, we have 70-plus percent of our students who are students of color, and yet our teaching staff does not reflect that diversity at all. And it has been an initiative of this board to attract more teachers of color as well. And we're doing that through things like the Grow Your Own program, which helps current staff members pursue education degrees. But, you know, we need to continue that program and broaden that reach also, so that the people who are interacting with our students every day in the classrooms are also more reflective of the student body. Thank you.
This question is for candidate Drake. How can you make our schools more welcoming and inclusive and our curriculum more culturally responsive?
Thank you for that question. Would you repeat it one more, would you please repeat it?
How can you make our schools more welcoming and inclusive and our curriculum more culturally responsive?
That is a good question. The, the question is, how do we make this school more inclusive? And I would think that the way to do that is to buy the courses and the programs that we offer the parents of the district that have children, that they can make the decision that this is the best, this is the best school for their child, the best system. As the parent of four daughters, I will, and I have been upfront about this, two of my daughters graduated from this high school, as I did many years ago. Two of my daughters did not. There were reasons for that. It is, it was a decision that my wife and I made, that because of some special issues with a child, that we did not feel the district could deal with them, and we didn't feel it was the district's responsibility, and we made that decision. But I would hope that we could do everything possible to make everyone welcome in this, in the school system, from preschool through high school. It is, it is one of the things, one of the reasons why I still live in this community, I've lived in this community for 50 years because of the diversity. And I do wish, and I will strive to make sure, that this school community reflects the diversity of the community as a whole. Thank you.
My question is for candidate Clompton Zimba. Did I say that right? Okay. Thank you. What impact do you hope to make in Cleveland Heights in terms of our education, and what do you plan on doing that's different than what we've been doing in the past?
Well, one thing I can say is, before you do anything in terms of imagining, or in terms of implementing your own ideas, you have to go to the community, go to the students, go to the folks who value arts in our three cities that make up our school district, and, and see what the lay of the land is. I had the privilege of serving as Roxboro Middle School's choir director when I first started teaching. I, I taught from 2010 to 2013, and the depth and breadth of, of access to musical excellence, visual arts, theatrical productions, and, and the like, are, are in many ways unmatched. I am interested in assuring ways to make sure that all parts of our district, regardless of what school you attend, you have the same fantastic access to arts education in every single medium of art, visual, music, theatrical, et cetera. I'd like to make sure that we're considering dance and movement, too. There has been a lot of work to make sure that financially, the buildings get the same amount of monies. But I am a doctoral scholar in education equity, and money won't fix all of the problems. We really have to make sure that in terms of staffing, the quality of the, the scheduling in terms of, of the, the arts education also happens as well. More partnerships with the several institutions of higher education here. You know, I know just from my doctoral research that, you know, we want to build a diverse, I, I don't like to use the word diverse when I mean, we want more people of color, we want more black people to serve on our faculty, and that doesn't happen through osmosis or by wishing it. The reality is, is that you have to have high school students thinking of the arts. You have to have high school art students interested in joining education programs at these schools, and then get through the four years, and then get their teacher's license for them to apply to these jobs. And so, we need to be more creative with how we are networking with the various institutions, thinking specifically for arts education, and, and those admissions programs, to ensure that, you know, we have black candidates, candidates with diverse experience, that we are tracking and making sure they know that Cleveland Heights is a school district where you can grow as a professional, have a solid salary and healthcare benefits, and work with some of the most talented students that the country has seen. But that doesn't happen by wishing it. We really have to be intentional about how we, we make that happen. I hope I answered your question.
This question is for candidate Heinz. Students are currently very concerned about safety in our schools. What are you planning to do about the recent threats to our safety here at Heights High, taking into consideration that students don't want metal detectors installed at the school?
Thank you. I don't want metal detectors installed at our schools either. I think that often for the good, and unfortunately for the bad, people tend to live up to expectations. And I think that metal detectors at our door are an indication of an expectation that is unwarranted, and so, I, I absolutely do not want them. Perhaps for athletic events and that sort of thing, it makes sense, but not at our, at our doors. To me, safety comes down to relationships. I see this every day at work, where we have a, a resource officer at the high school where I teach, that is fantastic. And school resource officers, for those who are not familiar with the program, and I think that there is some confusion around it, a school resource officer goes through extensive training on working in a school setting and protecting and maintaining safety through relationship building with the students. And I think anyone who knows Officer Pitts knows that, yes, that Officer Pitts is a fantastic man who knows our students, and who, most of all, who loves our students. And he has students here as well. He is a man of the community, and he is a wonderful, wonderful role model, who has dedicated a great deal of, of time developing the relationships that turn bad days into success days. I got to tell you that we have had a couple of tough days in, in, at Heights High recently. One thing, though, that we need to recognize, though, is that it is those relationships that got us through them, because folks did what they were supposed to do. They saw something and they said something, and that is a success. That's a success in, in the program that shows the trust that has been built. And so, where do we go from here? How do we improve that? I would like to see resource officers trained, dedicated resource officers in more of our buildings. I think that Officer Pitts is a great example. I would love to see him work to expand the program and lead the expansion of that program into our other, into our other school buildings, but metal detectors are not the answer. Trust, relationships, that's how you build safety. Thank you.
This question is for all the board candidates. What made you want to join the Board of Education? What made you all want to join the Board of Education?
So, we can, we can start on this end and just make our way down. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I grew up here, in this community. I went through these schools, K through 12. I have deep, deep roots here. My wife graduated from Heights High as well, and my son, some of you guys know, graduated this past May. So, this community means an immense amount to me. The word neighbor means a lot to me. And I was inspired to, to put myself on the ballot last time because I was deeply concerned about the man who was elected president five years ago. And I had to do something. I couldn't just sit around and mope about Donald Trump being elected president. And so, I thought, what is it that I can offer? What is it that I can do? What is my strength that perhaps I can leverage? And for me, within, with my experience in this community and as a teacher, I dedicated my energies here. And I'm very proud of the work that I have done on the board in the past four years, and I want to continue it. We have done great things. We have increased enrollment, we have, we have increased performance, we've done the best that we possibly could during COVID. Our pre-K programs are fantastic. $14 million in scholarships to the class of 2021 in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, the work that's being done in this district is, is fantastic and inspiring, and, and the five of you up here on this stage are a perfect testament to that. So, I want to do more. I love this community, I love our schools, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
It's an awesome question. So, I am a father of five children. I have five teenagers. One experience that I had with the school district in person had to do with the special ed process. And in that process, which as a matter of fact is still ongoing, it was arduous, it was, took a long time, and I couldn't understand why in the world that, that would be. You know, if somebody has a little bit more of an issue, learning, or needs some additional help, that is something that is supposed to be offered by the school district and, and their, and their process, but it didn't. It didn't happen. And so, I was compelled to do something to change it. And once I realized that there was an opportunity for me to change it, I got together with some other like-minded people, and we went through and said, "What can we do to make the Board of Education more efficient, more student-focused, more teacher-supportive?" And what we found, that there was so much chaos, and so much waste and inefficient spending, that we understood why it was that my child couldn't get the assistance that she needed, and why other students and other parents were suffering the same, and frankly, why the teachers went through what they did. And there have been questions tonight to that exact issue, teachers threatening strikes, teachers that are suing the school board right now. There's wasteful spending that needs to be stopped immediately, right? People know that there was money spent on the Milliken School, which is unused facility, or definitely what they use it for is, is not, in my opinion, a, a good reason to spend the kinds of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. How much of that money could have gone to support some of the issues that each one of you have brought here tonight? And each one of your friends have discussed with you, when you were thinking about all the questions, how many of you have thought about, "What do we need in this school, and why don't we have it?" And the answers are, because the monies are being spent in arenas that are not benefiting the students or the teachers. They are benefiting everybody at the top. The school board election is not about who's president, who's vice president, who's a senator, who's the congressman. It's about who's going to efficiently and honorably take care of you, the students, the parents, the teachers, and make sure that you have everything that you need to become the person that you want to become. And if the monies are diverted elsewhere, it won't happen. So, that's what I'm planning on doing.
Thank you. The reason why I decided to run for the board was, I, I've been here for over 50 years, I've raised four daughters, I had a granddaughter that attended the schools. I'm a, I'm a former CPA. I have sat on the board, financial committee of a group of community schools, they are public schools. And I learned about the public funding of education in the state of Ohio, and then I saw what this district was doing, and I was shocked. I will give you a couple of examples. Mr. Renner talked about the money spent at Severance Milliken, an empty building. This board sold four vacant parcels of land to the city of University Heights for $10 a parcel. I wish I could have bought those, that land. They sold a unused building, the Coventry School, that has been vacant for 20-plus years, to the Cleveland Heights University Heights Library Board for a dollar. $1. Now, do you know who appoints the library board? The five members who sit on the Board of Education. That's self-dealing. That is not right. This board, over the past number of years, has spent over $2 million in legal fees. The teachers' union filed a Freedom of Information request with, with Treasurer Gainer. He did not comply with that request, and the teachers' union had to sue to get the information that they are entitled to as, 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 for public record. When Mr. Gainer showed up at the hearing, he had an attorney from Squire Saunders or Squire's Patton. That's an expensive law firm. My wife is a lawyer. That is an expensive lawyer. This board is not spending the money that we, the taxpayers, have given them to educate you, the future of this community, in a reasonable manner. That is why I decided to run for the board. That is why I decided to run for the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Rondell, for that question. I'm a 27-year resident of University Heights. My son went to Garrity. He went to Boulevard. He went to Monticello. He went to the joint middle schools at Wiley, and he's now at the high school. You probably know him. I'm a UH resident. I'm the only UH resident on the board, and frankly, that's why I ran four years ago. When, as a UH resident, I would go out and talk to people, and not many people were using our schools from University Heights. And I was very frustrated because I would hear them make comments that I didn't think were fair, and I didn't think they were accurate because I knew what the schools were like. I knew it from having a child in the district. And our experience was fantastic. My son was getting a great education, and I wanted more people to know that. And so one of the reasons I ran was I wanted to be able to increase enrollment, and we successfully did that before COVID. We were the only district in the inner-ring suburbs of Cleveland that actually had an increase in enrollment because we were telling our story, and we were telling how great our kids were and the successes that our kids were having. And then also, when I looked at the board, I realized that at that time, there were very few people who represented the east and the north parts of the district. And because of where my son had gone to school and being a UH resident, I felt that, you know, somebody from UH needed to step up. And so I decided to do that. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I think that we have been able to help our students achieve. We have data that shows that. Our preschool programs are great. And when you look at all of the young families that are moving into University Heights, here's a little fun fact a lot of people don't know, is University Heights is one of the youngest communities in greater Cleveland. Half of the people are under age 30 or less, or age 30 or less. So it's a ripe opportunity for us to grow our district by attracting those families and bringing them in. And that's why I want to see things like Kindernet rebooted. I was a Kindernet rep, and I met a lot of the families when I was a Kindernet rep and encouraged them to come to our schools and talked up our schools. And I get great pleasure when I go to Garrity. I was at their ice cream social, and families were coming up to me and saying, the reason we're here is because of you, because we met you at a block party and you talked about your son, and you talked about how great our schools are, and we wanted to check it out. And that's what I always tell people. I always say, check it out before you rule it out. If you ultimately decide that it's not the right place for your child, fine. I want your child to be in what is the best educational opportunity for them. But how do you know that you've made the right decision if you haven't checked out all your options, if you haven't been in our public schools? So I always want to be out in the community and inviting people to come and experience it. And the best way I felt that I could do that was by being a board member. And so I'm still out there. I went to a bunch of block parties this summer trying to encourage people to please come to our schools. We were at Fall Fest, making sure that, at University Heights, that the young families knew about our district. So I think it's all about always telling our story. So thank you.
I led a very parapetetic life until my wife and I moved here in 2004. And we moved here specifically so that our kids could attend CHUH schools. And they did, for the most part. My son had to spend a little time elsewhere because adolescents didn't treat him very well. But they both received an amazing education from preschool up until graduation in 2019. That education will take them through their whole lives and allow them to be whoever they turn out to be, to be flexible, to be adaptable, to handle all of the vagaries that life will throw at them, all of that. And that's what we want for every student in the district. As a Jew, I have a very strong commitment to Tikun Olam, fixing the world. And since I have lived here, Cleveland Heights has become home because I've lived here longer than anywhere else. And so this is where I have a responsibility to make things better. And what better thing to do than to make things better for the children of the community? So I ran for school board four years ago because local politics was the only place I felt I had a role where I could make things better because it's confined enough, though now I know how complicated it is. At the time, I thought, okay, this is someplace I can have an impact and help kids. I'm running for a second term because the work that we were doing was interrupted by the pandemic. And I want to see us get back to the things that we were working on before we had to sort of go into full-on crisis, whoops, sorry, full-on crisis mode all the time. And, and we've been bouncing from crisis to crisis, as has every school district in the world. I mean, students all over the world have lost so many of the opportunities and the things that everybody expected for them. So it's about now figuring out, how do we get back on track? How do we make up for those, those lost years now and continue helping the students in our district?
My motivation for wanting to get, wanting to be elected to the school board is simple. It is you. Students in this district are the source and the summit of everything that we do. I think as an educator, about my students and their success and the things that they go through, and my neighbors and my cousins who are in this school district, every waking moment and every policy I consider, every, everything, every platform piece I have always has you in mind and the children that I hope my husband and I will have sitting in these seats. Right now, I know this school district is great. I've worked for it. I am not satisfied yet that my black children will be taken care of in this school district as it exists today. And that, you can say that and also talk about the great things our district is doing. I believe this district has so much potential in education equity, but it is not being monitored sufficiently by this Board of Education. Not through any malice or through any intention, intentional of not doing due diligence, just through a lack of inquiry about how the practice of equity is being implemented. I'm a scholar of education equity. I'm not asking my colleagues to do so, but every single board member has something to bring to the table. And that is something that I will bring to the table to make sure that on a doctoral level, that I know that the education equity policy is implemented with fidelity. I also have to push back on the realities of us learning and growing together, being a diverse community. We don't have a diversity here. While diversity are the many different ways we differ. We have an issue in the representation of blackness, as indicated on this panel here. This isn't an issue as it relates to being on the Board of Education that needs to happen with the, the subcommittees and boards and groups that are growing a crop of candidates. This school district is 71% black student population, and that means 71%-ish of our student families that go to the school or that, that have adults in the school are black as well. And beyond that, the black population that don't have children in the school district who care about it deeply. There is a systemic issue with access to power and privilege in this community because there is so much focus and centering of whiteness. And people don't like to say that out loud because it sounds bad. But we marched in 2015, we marched in 2016, we marched in 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21 for Black Lives. And Black Lives Matter isn't just a thing we say when they kill us. It means sharing institutional power and giving up space when you have privilege.
Thank you.
I'm running for you.
So panelists and candidates and audience, it seems that we have a bonus round because we have a little more time. So, and because we actually have a student audience that has generated questions after listening or in the process of listening. So we have Taylor Evans, who is going to ask the questions on behalf of the students who have just generated them. And we will have one asked by the person who actually wrote the, wrote one of the questions. I'm sorry. He'll introduce himself when he comes to the mic. So these, this bonus round will be, there'll be specific questions to a specific candidate. Not every candidate will get a question. And you will have two minutes in which to answer the question. And we thank you very much for your participation and your willingness to be spontaneous. Okay, Taylor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Evans, and I'm a junior here at Cleveland Heights High School. I hope that you all are doing well. So my first question is to Mr. Drake. What is your stance on the Ed Choice vouchers?
For your information, the current state legislature budget, the biannual budget, removed the voucher, the Ed voucher program from this district's budget. It is now, comes right out of the state funding, and it does not affect the funding that this district receives from the state of Ohio. Does that answer your question?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
That's the basis. Thank you. My second question is to Mr. Mario. Assuming you've done your research on the Cleveland Heights University High School District already, what is something specifically that you've observed?
That I've observed?
Yes.
I can say that I've observed and looked at the, the work of our teachers and our instructional staff in terms of the achievement information, that, the data that is there. I, I don't like using the word achievement gap. Research talks about opportunity gaps. I, I don't believe fundamentally that the measure of our student success is based in testing scores. You can take that from me, who was a solid C and a half student in reading and writing. Here I am, about to leave here, continuing my dissertation writing, page 550. I learned in my school that, I didn't do well on the test, but I learned, and I know that's happening here. I've observed a passionate and, and dedicated parent community. I've, I have witnessed the talents and the abilities of our students on stage and on the field. I have recognized and went over our fiscal policies and, and interested in helping to improve the accountability and transparency practices that the current board members do push back on for the various reasons that they do have. And I hear the, the conversation that's happening. I just think that there should be more voices pushing back against the status quo. That is how we create consensus. That is how we create dialogue, is by, is by having different opinions in a room. And I want to provide the opportunity to challenge why we don't do the things that the community has asked for, et cetera. Because I do think that this board and this district has done great work. I think more black voices need to be in positions of power to say that and to be in that position. But yeah, that's, I guess, what I can say, I've, I've observed.
Thank you. My next question is to Mr. Renner. I'm wondering if, if you would trust the public school to educate your children?
Sorry, can you repeat that question again, ma'am?
The question is, I'm wondering if you would trust the public schools to educate your children? So in other words, would you trust Cleveland Heights High School District, would you, or not high school, but Cleveland Heights School District, to educate your children?
To educate, so your question is whether or not I would trust the school district to educate my children?
Correct.
I, I would, actually. Very simple. It's very obvious why my children don't go to Heights High School, that they're in, in high school. Nothing to do with the students, nothing to do with the high school. It's very simple. I wear a yarmulke. I'm an Orthodox Jew. There's diversity. Part of the education that my children receive is a religious education. And I think the one thing that everybody here will agree is we cannot mix religious education and public education. It would be a violation of many different reasonings, and it's very, very potentially something that could violate the church and state. But absolutely, I would. What I wouldn't accept is the fact that if my children were here under the same pretenses as everybody else, and they needed a special education process to be had, and they went through it the same way that I'm having now, that wouldn't be acceptable. And by virtue of those kind of things not working properly, I'm here to help facilitate those things to be fixed. But thank you for the direct question.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hello? Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. My next question is to Ms. Lewis. In light of recent safety issues, what is the board doing to improve safety and communication, specifically to the students about the incidents in the building?
The board itself is not doing anything specific in the high school because that's not our role. So I know that's not a very helpful answer to you. But we are very aware of what's been going on in the high school recently, and we get briefed by the superintendent anytime there's an incident that she thinks we need to know We're very, what's the word? We're very clear about the need to improve the social and emotional education of our kids and, not just education, but just to provide the supports for the students, social and emotional supports for the students and for the staff, just because we've all been cooped up for a year and a half and everybody's going a little bonkers. And so that's something that, you know, that's a policy-level thing which we are part of. But in terms of what's going on with the students in the building proper, that's at a, at a, at a building level, that's not at a board level.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for answering. I will turn it over to the other student that will be speaking.
Evans, I'm being the Gear Up Student of the Year. So I just wanted to say congratulations to you.
Congratulations, Taylor.
Hi, my name's Malcolm. I'm a sophomore, sophomore here at Heights High School. I, I just have one question here for Drake. You have made homophobic comments in the past, and our school has a large LGBTQ plus community. What would you say to students that have concerns about your anti-LGBTQ policies?
I do not have any policies against that. For the record, our daughter attended Oberlin College, so I am not against the LBGTQ community at all. She had many teammates and friends that were not, that were gay or lesbian or bi, and they stayed at our house. I had no problems with them. So wherever you pick that statement up, that is not a true statement.
Thank you. In closing, thank you all for your, for participating in our student-led forum. The students of our district deserve a voice in the decisions that impact their future, even if they are not yet old enough to vote. I hope all the participants and those watching come away from this forum with more insight into the election and appreciation for the students of Heights High and public education in our district. Thank you and good evening.